This time it's reception of the public and first on our list is a presentation by Garmin Miller and Associates. And we go with Mr. Voltell. Would you mind introducing your crew, please?
Sure. Is this on?
I think so.
So I'm Eric Voltell with Garmin Miller. With me tonight is Wayne Coleman, Matt Hedner, Wes Harne, and Doug Rentsch. So tonight, we just want to review with you your master plan options. Look at your facilities project, how things maybe have changed, and let you know options moving forward, and answer any questions.
You should probably sit out here.
Yeah, sure. So today's agenda, we want to talk about the timeline, review your previous bond issue, talk about what's changed, what updates there are, and talk about options moving forward. So tonight, really what needs to happen is it's not a resolution, it's not a final decision, it's more a consensus, one way or another, whether you believe as a board you want to consider a May ballot, or do you want to alter now? And you'll find out more as we talk, the reasons for that. We have a short window of time to iron out the final details and the final pricing and mileage, and get you that information to allow you to make a final decision. And so the first thing that would need to happen if you do choose to consider a May ballot is we need to meet with the state right away and just iron out those details and get our questions answered from them. Since they are a co-owner and contributing a significant amount of money, we need to make sure we understand fully the scope of the project from their perspective and what their contribution is. From there, the deadline to submit to your Mercer County auditor is January 22nd, where they'll finalize their portion of the financials, and then February 3rd is the submission to Board of Elections. So you'll have to have, prior to that, board action. So just the scenario, if the consensus is, yes, we want to consider a May ballot, we would compile the final information of what that would look like to present to you, and then prior to January 22nd, you could vote on whether you are moving forward or not. So just a review of your previous master plan, and this is the scope of what was included back in the spring. It was renovation of your 5-6 building and adding on, in addition, to make it a PK-6 intermediate school. Then there would be a new 7-12 school building, and abatement and demolition of buildings listed there, primary, elementary, middle, high, and education complex. Now, the high school and education complex would be partial demolitions, and we'll get into that on the next slide with LFI's. So outside of the co-funded project, you're able to identify local funded initiatives of other things you want to do outside of the state's scope. And this list is what was listed as your primary LFI's in the last bond issue. These were the LFI's that you identified as had to happen with the LFI dollars. You'll notice that the bottom, highlighted in green, demolished primary and elementary schools. This was listed as an LFI in some of the campaign language, but it is a co-funded item. That's why that's pointed out differently. The next slide is what we call secondary LFI's. So this was the list of items that I've called wishlist, that if funds allowed, you wanted to do as many of these as possible. And one thing I should have noted on the previous slide, and it's on this slide as well, those numbers in parentheses, that comes from your planning committee meeting that you had whenever the planning committee took votes for what were the most important items, and those represent the number of votes for each one of those. So the financial summary, next slide here is your rank at that time, your OFCC equity rank was 340 out of 612 public schools. That means you had a 56% local share. State share was 44% of the co-funded scope. So your contribution total was $69,046,475. That breaks down to 44 million of it was co-funded portion, and 24.8 million in LFI, and the state was contributing 34.9 million. That equated to property taxes, 7.4 mils. The language in the bond was maximum of 38 years. There's a half mil in addition that's requirement of OFCC for maintenance, satisfied. And in the campaign, it was noted that the three mils from your previous bond was coming off the books at the end of 2020. So what's that mean to $100,000 home? 7.9 mils equates to $276.50 per year. That was at the time of the spring bond issue. That came right from the campaign language. So what's changed in your updated master plan? Enrollment has increased. We got updated enrollment projections, and then that shows an increase in enrollment over your next 10 years. OFCC budget costs have changed. So it's been a couple of years now that the OFCC hasn't updated their cost sets. They apply inflation factors from time to time, and the costs have changed. Then equity rank, your equity rank continues to change for the good. In 2020, you went to 329 ranking on the equity list, which equates to 54% local share. And in 2021, you'll move to 309, which is 51% local share. So these things are fluid and changing, and timing is everything with OFCC to make sure you're getting the right plan and the most, maximize your dollars from the state. Get your share that's due to you with your ranking and enrollment and all those things. So when you compare the master plans, you'll see on the left, your previous master plan, enrollment was 2708, 56% local share. And these square foot costs, you see, those were the square foot costs used between elementary, middle school, and high school for the state to determine the cost of your buildings. So they take the number of students, there's a certain formula for so many square foot per student, that gives them the program and how big your buildings are, and that's how they determine your budget. So your total co-funded project was $79 million at that time. So what was sent out last week from the state to the district as an updated master plan showed an enrollment of 3,025. Your local share moved to 54%, but you see that the cost sets never changed. And they showed a total co-funded project of over $94 million. And this is why we said you didn't want to approve it just yet, because if you would have locked in, and you were locking in at costs that were still from 2019, and you'll see on the next slide, that just today, they sent over another update to the district. Enrollment stayed essentially the same, changed by two students. They show your local share at 54%, but now you can see they have applied an 11% increase to the cost set, which is something we knew was coming this year. So that makes your total co-funded $98 million. Now, we'll get into this a little bit, but we know that in April, they're talking about another cost set adjustment. They will not divulge if they know exactly what they're going to make that, but we're assuming it's going to be somewhere around 5% give or take. And then in July is whenever you would move to that 51% local share.
Can we talk real quick here about that enrollment? Because that surprised me. Again, I'm new, but all we heard about, I was veteran of the campaign, is the enrollment's going down, everyone's moving out of the district. So where did these 300 and some odd new students come from, from previous plan? Is that true? There was some conjecture, maybe it was Tristar numbers? What's our numbers there?
There's a blend of that, because they're also taking into consideration the housing that's happening. If you drive down Myers Road and see all those apartments coming in, you know that's going to increase the population here in the city.
So there, that, those, just to be clear, that enrollment's not an actual number, those are projected enrollment.
That's your 10-year projection.
So we have to build off of projected enrollment numbers rather than what we actually have in the community?
Correct.
Also, Mr. Voltell, if we lock in at a certain dollar amount, and they come out and say in July, would that be the last time that they come out with a new percentage of inflation or adjustment?
On the, on the costs?
Yeah, do we, are we in any kind of local responsibility as far as dollar amount? If the inflation rate goes up after we certify that we're going to run a certain project and take it to the auditor and the Board of Elections?
Yeah, to some extent. So the OFCC will tell you that the master plan is what it is once you lock into it and once you move forward. So let's say that by the time you get to the construction, whatever timeframe that is between your bond issue and the design and actually getting bids, if something happens within markets that there is unusual inflation that you weren't covered, generally, it's up to you to cover. So you're either going to cut some things from your scope of your work to get back on budget, or you're going to have to put more money in. Now, you know, with 11% and another 5% on top, I would certainly hope, at least for the foreseeable future, you're covered within a reasonable time, but yes, if there would be something above and beyond that, it's on the district to cover. It's very hard once you lock in, that's why it's so important. Once you lock in to what the state share is, to get additional money from their end is, there's a lot of things to make that happen. So it's important to get it right from the beginning. And that's where we believe that even if you decide, hey, we want to look at a May ballot, and we, you know, we want to go that direction. Wayne was able to talk with your planner today, since we got that updated master plan. Eugene is your planner, and he shared some things. He, you know, acknowledged that if you held off until July to get your plan approved, that you would be at that 51%, and he thought that would be wise. Also, by that time, that additional inflation, whatever it may be, if it is 5%, would be factored in. And that wouldn't necessarily hold you from continuing forward with May ballot. We'll just have to work with the state to factor those things in so that you're going out through your local share to cover all those anticipated costs. And that would be the best of both worlds for you. You could go out and raise your local share, you time it so that in July, you're getting your 51% and that additional inflation factor from the state.
So even if we chose to send a ballot and to send something about in May, that does not preclude us from getting an accurate construction number with the inflation numbers in there and getting the 50, 49% state paid? Is that correct?
Correct. Wayne wants to add.
I think, I think one more thing to answer your question as far as inflationary numbers to get into the project, and now all of a sudden, something increased. When OFCC establishes their cost for construction, they use a three-year average. So they take past year, present, and then a future year. So they've already forecasted that cost to go out another year. So it does help you balance that budget. The risk is when they would actually, so you lock in on your master plan, you're locked in for a year, and you're good to go. If their funding were to be delayed for two years, then you've kind of caught up to the, we'll say, the high end of that budget number one. So, and as Eric mentioned, you know, sometimes you get, districts get caught in that, and what they had planned on using some LFI dollars maybe for ends up being used to support the project. So you're promising your voters, we're going to build a school, it's going to be this size, it's going to be done this way, and all of a sudden, you're having to manipulate some of your monies to make sure you get what you said you were going to get. But the same thing happens with the LFI's. You start cutting the LFI's, you know, it's always that, what you told us we were going to get.
You do.
Something, so.
Is there an average that the OFCC timeline is for budgetary support? Can we count on it, this thing would pass, and we're at normal times? Was, is it usually 18 months?
Doug, you want to go to the next slide?
Sure.
So it kind of ties with this. There's, there's multiple programs through the OFCC. These are the two that would apply to you. Last Term Facility Assistance Program, CFAP, and Expedited Local Partnership Program, L. CFAP was the program that you were under when you went out on your spring bond issue. That means that you were up for funding, it's your time in line, and recently, the way I've had to explain to you from OFCC, they put you in that program when you're within two years of being funded. Then the Expedited Local Partnership, there has been some issues recently with funding with the state where some districts that have raised their local share and they were up, have been waiting for some time to get the state share. So they've been, I would say, a little bit more flexible with this L program, but generally, they tell you, you only can be in that L if you're outside of two years of being funded. So you say, hey, we're ready to go out now, and they say, well, you know, you're three years away, you can apply in that request to be in the expedited, and that's where you raise your local share, and you can go ahead and get started on the project, and then you would be credited back once your time comes up to be funded with the state.
Yeah, I think currently, in my discussion with Eugene today, I asked that specific question, you know, what are we looking at for funding here in the future? There is some money that's being applied for funding for '21, but it's going to the districts that had already passed their local share. OFCC said, we don't have the money, I'm sorry. You can go ahead and do an expedited program, and then when we get the money, we'll come into the issue district. And so that little bit of money they're getting, and I can't even tell you the total millions of dollars that they have, but that is going to be used to support those districts that were unable to get that funding. What that means then is that we're at least a year away from offering of funding. On the good side of it, you are a lapsed district in the CFAP program. So you're at the highest funding position that you can be out of all the districts after they clean up kind of the mess they've got themselves into a year or a little bit earlier. So that's the good news. Also, capital budgets, capital funding, that happens on even years. So in 2022, that's when we'll see, you know, capital funds being raised, and we're hoping that there'll be a significant amount of money that will be applied into OFCC for that. And traditionally, that's what they receive. It's just over the past couple of years, they just, they got themselves into a mess, basically. And a lot of that was due to lapsed districts that were passing their levy, or, I'm sorry, their ballot, and saying, okay, we've got our local share, and then OFCC didn't have enough funds to cover.
Would you explain lapsed district if anybody's watching?
A lapsed district is you have a window of time, once you get your plan approved, it's 13-month window, and if you cannot raise your local share within that 13-month window, then you become a lapsed district. So for you, that happened September. You, September was when you became a lapsed district. That was after the 13 months of your plan being approved. So that, when we talked about meeting with the state, that would be a topic of conversation is, hey, you know, Salina is contemplating May, they're serious about looking at this. What direction should we go? Would they still be in the CFAP program? Or would you suggest they apply for L? That's something we would try to get them to give us some direction on. And not too muddy, the water's too much, but you'll notice within the CFAP there, you do have an option of a segmented program. So you can do a portion of your project, raise your local share for a portion of the project, and then do the second phase later on down the road. So what we did, just to give you some idea, so we've talked about an 11% increase that we know about for sure from the state, and we're projecting another 5%. So you need to factor those inflation rates into your LFI's. So we took 16% across the board on those, just to give you some idea of how those increase. But something that works in your favor, you'll notice on the last two, you, in the previous master plan, you wanted some additional square footage to fit your program that's above and beyond the state program. And because you have a greater, your enrollment is increased, that means you have a bigger building that's state-funded, that means you need less dollars in the LFI to fund what you want to do. So there's a balance there. Yeah, you know, the increase in enrollment makes it a bigger project, a bigger scope, but it's closer to giving you the buildings you need for what you were planning with more state contribution. So the next slide is just looking at the secondary LFI's, and I'll just mention that it's nice how you've done this with creating a list of must-have primary LFI's and then secondary, that's kind of acknowledging that depending on how things go with the budget, we have this wishlist, so you have some flexibility there.
Just for the folks watching online, these came out of all the community meetings. Now, those would have taken place in 2019, so they took place in all of the buildings, but we literally had clickers and voted and sat in working groups. And so if you're looking at your Facebook screen and going, well, I would have preferred a metal roof versus, all of these came out of community involvement meetings. So these were chosen by Salina's citizens, people that are doing that. So if you're wondering, well, they never asked me, that's where these came out of, were these working group meetings at all the different buildings in 2019. So just, just so you're clear, were these kind of locally funded items, and that is why, if you see like the top ones, for example, keeping the 1998 high school addition, that what we're sitting in right now, and turning this into district space and head start, all of our folks knew that that was physically a responsible thing to do, creates that. But then also, you look down to the fixed seat auditorium, that's a huge deal for a lot of people in the community that have the third month. So I just want to make sure that's clear for people watching online, because if I was watching and I didn't know, I'd go, well, who'd you ask? And where'd you get these things? And why are these priorities? The priorities, because that's what the citizens that came to the meeting said were the priorities.
So the next slide, we took, just to help you understand the master plan we received today, the left side is your previous master plan from the spring, and then on the right is what we received today. So the one today showed the 54% local share, a co-funded total amount of $98 million. That was a $45 million state contribution, $53 million local share. Your LFI's came down to $22.8 million with that square footage, and that equates to a local share with LFI's and co-funded total of $75 million. So what are your options moving forward? You could choose to go back out with the full master plan, the same project scope as the last bond issue, and then we'd update the financials accordingly. You could consider a segmented plan, like I mentioned. Most likely, just based on need and some community surveys in the last few years, that would probably be the PK-6 that would be first. So it'd include the renovation of the 5-6. In addition to that, abatement, demolition of the two, the primary and elementary, and that would still be a state-co-funded project. And then you would just have to address the next piece of that project down the road when you felt the timing was right. Or your other option is to delay any facilities OFCC project for now. Those really, I think, are the choices moving forward. So we tried to show you best we could, and what these numbers represent are taking this most recent master plan and factoring in that 5%. And just for exercise purposes here, we started with the 54% local share. A full master plan project would roughly be about $78.6 million, and this is your local share that you would need to raise, $22.8 million of that being LFI. Now, these are really rough numbers. I got a few millie adjustments from our financial person that helps us. I don't have the exact one, so roughly, it's going to be in the seven and a half mil range, which is roughly $255 per $100,000 home. This would be one of the pieces that we would work once we move forward, that we would iron out the exact details for you to see. Next, we have what a segmented project would look like at 54% with the PK-6. That'd be about $31.5 million locally, $9.1 million of that being LFI. So your LFI is smaller for the PK-6 related.
Okay, just a, just a question.
Yeah.
Does that include the five mil, .5 mil operations that has to be included, or just?
Just the project.
Okay, so.
Not the half mil.
For example, the previous one would then become eight mil.
Right.
This would be about 3.5.
Correct.
Okay.
So that's 37-year bond, that's 2.99 mils, roughly $105 per year. So the next is taking both of those, looking at a 51% local share. The full master plan now comes down from 78.6 to 75.6. And that's roughly $245 per year tax. I don't, and the next one is the PK-6 at 51%, about $30 million. That's 2.89 mils, about $100 per year. So to give you maybe a little bit of a scale to help, this next slide just shows you a sliding scale, just giving you an idea of a few categories of what that equates to on annual tax to help with your planning. You know, one thing that can be done is take another look at LFI's. I think if you decide you do want to look at a May ballot, that's something that needs to happen too. We need to talk to you as a district about, is that, you want to go with that same list? Do we want to refine that in any way? And that can also adjust what your total financial implications are.
Doug, have you seen any districts do mixed funding? But have you seen any districts do mixed funding to try and not just put it on property owners, but to do a income tax? What are our options? And I'm pretty sure it's just income, unlike Mr. King and I have talked at length about this. I think it's just income and property that we can put forward to the voters, but have you done projects? What are we able to do there?
To my knowledge, your options are income or property. And we have had districts do an income, we've had them do 100% real estate, we've had districts do a combination. I'd say the vast majority are purely property tax, but there are, there have been some that have chose income tax or a combination thereof.
What's the highest percentage you've had of income tax-funded project like this bond issue?
1%. Maybe.
So 1% income, the rest property?
To declare, I just want to make that so they can understand that we did just drop off quite a bit of tax funding, billage this past year. So we're looking at, what, we dropped off three mils, I believe?
Yeah, it's like 1.1 effective mileage, three mils, but I got voted in.
So everyone will be seeing their taxes decrease, because by the time, no matter what we choose to do, your taxes for 2021, property will decrease. Now, it might be offset if the community president raises them, so we'll see what happens, but that'll be there.
Dr. Ken, is there anything that could change that as far as our property taxes going down in 2021?
Well, with the reevaluations out there, that could be a balance between the rural land and the homeowners in the city. So there could be some balancing out there.
So in other words, agricultural land could decrease, and that would have an effect on the property that is inside a corporation level?
Correct, because the levies that are out there will still collect the same overall amount of money.
Can't go anymore, just, gotcha.
Correct.
There's also some rumblings in the House that they might freeze property tax increases due to COVID. So they might have Senator Huffman, our senators pushing for that pretty hard right now. So there might not be any increases, but that would be a state decision, so we'll see if they get that done. When you guys look through our LFI's, to anyone that's looked at them, I know all you guys have been at it, is there, is there stuff that you guys look at and think, yeah, that's something we might be able to be creative, or that's gonna be something we can remove? Or is that really come down to us talking as board for community intent, that you guys are kind of just, hey, whatever the project that the community decides, go for? I mean, obviously, the biggest one being the additional square footage at CIS being 5 million, that's a huge number. Is that something as you guys look through a bigger facility? You obviously don't want to build a brand-new school and then have it feel tiny, or not room in your classrooms, but locally funded, I mean, that's a quarter of our LFI's is just an additional square footage, so.
Yep. I, I guess I'll give you my opinion on that, and I'll also get Matt as the architect, get him to give his opinion. On the square footage piece, that's one area I would not shortchange yourself. That is one that just about every one of the districts we work with adds a certain amount of square footage, almost always. Because the program from the state, I would say, is kind of the minimum needed, especially in today's world with much more student-centered learning and project-based, a lot more breakout areas, small group rooms, extended learning areas, which is planned for your PK six. To provide that kind of individualized education, you really need those spaces. And so I would not, that's one area I would not shortchange.
Okay.
Now, there are other areas. I know a lot of times, like especially with the brick, if you can work things like that within your budget, a lot of times you can work it in with the budget you have. So setting it aside that this is something we have to have, you know, there's probably a conversation to be had there. Matt, I don't know if anything else stands out for you?
Yeah, no, I mean, I completely echo Eric's comment about the overall square footage. That's an important piece, that learning component that we talked about in the, in the program of requirements. I would definitely not shortchange that. So, but I do think, you know, there could be some opportunities, like Eric said, with the brick and everything as well, which we really try to keep, to work that within the original co-funded budget. So hopefully that you do have some savings there on your LFI side of things as the project progresses and can lead to other opportunities, or just, you know, actually being able to hold that back and be under budget at the end of the project.
So what you're saying is in your original design, you might try and submit that as a, hey, let's see if we can get this already in the budget, or it's a normalized material? It might look better, and it could be a win-win with how having used it as an LFI.
Correct. You know, the other thing to remember too, is that the materials that you have a choice of picking through that are co-funded, standing seam metal roof is typically co-funded, but it's at the high end of cost. Shingle roof is a little bit lower, flat roof, rubber roof's lower. So you have options as you go through. Brick, instead of full brick, which is co-funded, you may be use a split-faced block and a combination brick, or all split-faced block. The key here is that when you take the high end of all of the material list, you probably will be over budget. And so what OFCC does is come back and say, you know what, you're over budget, you're going to have to cut out this. Standing seam metal roof now becomes a shingle roof. You can't use all brick, it has to be this. So what we do is try to encourage what you have done, is you try to set aside LFI dollars to cover a standing seam metal roof and brick. So the trick in the design is to get you the right design, and hopefully we can be under budget when it goes out for bid. And if it's under budget, the standing seam metal roof could be co-funded, the brick could be co-funded.
Really?
So it's all that balancing act as we go through. And so part of design, making sure that you're prepared to give what you've talked to the community about, those are held in LFI's. And the goal is to, when we get into construction and our bids come in, we can get more co-funding, and offset that on mine.
Makes a lot of sense, thank you.
But I think there's definitely, that LFI discussion is something important to happen when you do choose to move forward, just to go through the list, make sure there are still priorities, make sure the numbers are right, maybe have those conversations. Are there some things that maybe fall off, or if it gets modified in some way?
Another piece that's within the budget that you may not readily know, there's contingency funds that are built into that budget. There's interest that you gain on your local share that's being held. That interest can sometimes offset, you know, an over-budget item. Used to be years ago that OFCC would not allow you to use your interest money until the very end of the project. Well, that's kind of too late, you need to do something during construction. So they loosened up on that. The only thing that's required from the district, if you were to use your interest money early, is that you need to provide some certification to the state that if you got toward the end of the project, you had a way of recouping that interest that you just used. So it's a little more flexibility with it.
Does OFCC have any preference on as far as the funding formula between property tax and sales tax? Does it matter at all to them?
Income tax?
I'm sorry, income tax. What I say, sales tax. Income tax. They don't care where the money's coming from.
No.
You just have to certify, I've got the money, they're the government, man. You can take it whenever you want.
Dr. Ken? One piece I wanted to clarify on the primary LFI's. You did mention there about the change of current bus garage to a parent parking lot at the pre-K six building. But the other piece that goes along with that, the 1984 TriStar addition, there used to be an automotive lab as part of that addition. That would then be upgraded and changed into our bus garage. So if people were looking at that, wondering, you know, why is that TriStar addition listed on this? That's because we were going to be using that for our new bus garage.
And the parent parking lot comes from any parent that's ever done pickup and drop-off at any of our buildings knows that it is an abject nightmare. And so that was what came out of the meetings, we're like, no, we cannot construct new facilities and have pickup and drop-off fees, what it currently is comprised of.
I asked the mayor one time, please, would you not send any police to the primary building? Because those women haven't figured it out. Don't try to get in the middle of it, or you'll get hurt.
It's got to take, it's just like driving to Chicago, you stay in, you got a gap, you go, take it.
Hey, Eric, just a little question pertaining to the numbers, the estimate numbers you have. Have those taken into consideration, the most recent increase in materials that we're seeing?
Yeah, yes, from the OFCC perspective, they, they have built that into those numbers.
Those numbers are using that December 21st plan, so to speak.
Okay, because I've heard we're seeing in the field of minerals, being 15 to 28% increase on certain materials.
Yeah.
Some of those are permanent, some run, so I was just curious what those would be addressed to.
Yeah, just to clarify, those last four options of budgets that we showed that had the first two being 54%, and the next two being 51%, that's, those numbers reflect 16% inflation factor, and that includes the 11%, and then we put an additional 5% guessing at what April's assessment would be.
Because our goal is not to have to go to voters and say, oops, sorry, we can't do that. Our goal is to deliver on what we promised to voters and not have to go back. Yeah.
You know, Dr. Schmiesing's asking if you guys have any comments or input, questions. First, Mayor Hazel and President King and City Council, thank you for attending our meeting.
We certainly appreciate the opportunity to come and at least be a part of this initial phase. I think this is obviously a very important part of looking into community and what can be done. So as you discuss what kind of phasing, whatever you want to do, I think it starts coming in on how it gets presented to the public and how the city can support as well. Because certainly, strong school, strong city. Dr. Schmiesing and I have talked about that, it's very important. Those things the city should be able to do to also, utility-wise, same belonging nature that we certainly can work together on.
I just want to thank you guys for coming, just to come and digest, it's a lot of information. We're all taking it for the first time, so to have you guys, the worst thing we can do is not have each other know what's going on. So the best thing is to be sitting in the same room and hearing the same information. And obviously, we have to make our decisions, but at least if we can all have that information, it's just, I really appreciate you guys coming.
And that's a great point. We know you're seeing these for the first time, it's a lot to take in, and it's why tonight's not, it's not a final decision, it's just a consensus one way or the other of whether you think you want to look at a May ballot or not. If you do, then we would work with you and the state to get the numbers more refined so that you could see a final plan and then make the final decision in January.
So what you're saying is we need to talk amongst ourselves now to make sure that we're not sending you guys down a rabbit trail to make a lot of phone calls and do a lot of math that you don't need to do?
Yeah, I'd say if, you know, it's a strong consensus of no, then let's don't contact the state and go down the route. Even if you lean towards yes and still need more information, I'd say that's a reason to make those calls and at least see where it goes.
I have a question for Mr. Farin, not to put you on the spot, but you study politics and voting trends? And this is a leading question, so forgive me in advance. But wouldn't you think, Wes, in May, the voting public is going to be feeling more secure than they do now?
My answer to that question is yes. I think, excuse me, I think the voting public, the more information that they have, the better they're going to be. And we're in an information turmoil right now, whether it's on a presidential election or what Congress is going to do with stimulus. And I think by the time we get to May, we're going to have a pretty clear-cut vision of what is going to happen moving forward. So on a very grand scale, I would agree with that sentiment, yes. You like where we live.
Yeah. I think one thing I know, I was thinking about this as I pulled into my garage today, if I was a, if I was just not as plugged in, and I'm trying to pay my bills and get the kids to school, and then I see on my Facebook page, Board of Education, building, there might be a little bit of shock of like, man, we just passed an operations levy, and now you're just going to do that? And I think two things, one, the operations was no new taxes, just our higher people for that, that we just passed, and we thank them for that. But also, we're making a decision about what happens in literally five months. Five months is a ton of time, but we have to, because these timelines are put on us to get something on the ballot. And so we would probably all love to wait till March if we could, but that, that's not an option for us if we want something on May. But also remember, if it feels like, well, no, May's right around the corner, that's like saying July feels like right around the corner. No, July was five months ago, and it feels like a year and a half ago. And so I think that kind of just to breathe, and I think that's why I would agree with your sentiment, Wes. May, May, at the very least, should have better better. So to say what we'll know is going to be like five months from now, I think we can obviously all hope for that. I'll just speak for myself, I don't know how you want to handle it, Mr. So. I think we should at least move forward, whatever plan we decide to do. I don't, I'm in favor of moving forward to something on May ballot. I doubt it will come as a shock for anyone who's known me being involved in the last levy campaign. I don't think our facilities represent the best of what Solana can do. I don't think our facilities represent the best of what we should offer to our students. When I pick up my daughter, who's in second grade, from a building built in the 1950s, that 70-year-old folks that attended my church went to the same school as my eight-year-old, I don't think that represents the best of who we are as a community, and I think we can do better. And, and when someone offers to pick up 50% of the bill, I think that's a offer you have to look at seriously and also recognize, this is not going to go away. We, we're going to have public schools, the facilities will only get older, we literally have no more debt on the books, there's no more bonds on the books. We paid off all debt, and so this is not us considering, man, you're still paying down something. So as far as our, our district being in a position, it feels like now's the time before it keeps getting 11% more expensive year after year after year. So that's just kind of what I stand.
I would agree. I think my position is it's not something that we necessarily want to spend money on, but we feel that we need to invest in the children of the school district. I mean, and, and that comes to being necessary rather than just a want, and that's where I am. It's something that, and the longer we delay, the more cost. Mrs. Hordy, Mr. Mrs. Givens?
Well, I think everybody knows that my philosophy has always been, the school should be the center of the community, bottom line. And this community needs better schools to become a better community. It's a package deal. That's my stand. We've got to, we've got to start moving up.
I'm going to agree with you, but I think we've made some, some good decisions holding off in the past. I think that was a smart thing to do, I think it was the right thing to do. But, I mean, we can only hope that things get better, but we can't, we can't keep waiting.
Right.
Just for the perfect time, because there will never be a perfect time.
Yeah, I agree, it is once again time to give it a try. We all know unless we put it out there, I'm always for. We all felt unless we put it out there, I'm always for any school levy that comes across ours, it's for the betterment of our community and our kids. That's, that's all we have in mind. So if we don't at least try, give them what they deserve, then shame on us. So, yeah, we need to proceed.
And I think we can all say, whether it's people were for or against the levy that ran in March, the governor did not do us any kindness with canceling the election less than 24 hours before it was going to happen, promising the voters an IOU, having the State House, and I'm just replaying, these are facts, having the state of Ohio not have a new date established for well over a week, the governor going on Ohio TV telling the voters it would be in June, the state of Ohio coming back and saying it would be April 28th, the rest of us being told to stay home for two weeks. I don't think that made for a very democratic election this past year. And so those are the facts, whether you're for or against the levy, that I don't think really represented a great temperature being taken. And, and, and so that was just a mess of all messes. And so I think even just thinking through that, giving the voters an opportunity to go to the polls, to vote early, to do these things at a normally established time, it's not a special election, there's nothing with that, doesn't cost the district anything to run, there's some value. And really, I think letting the people be heard in a quote-unquote "normal" hopefully.
There was as much risk in November, I believe, this year as there was last spring. I mean, and we understand that now. I guess at the time, he didn't know that, but it didn't help us at all. But there's, there's where we're coming from, all five of us.
I agree.
It's informal and that's the way it has to be, but.
We will contact the state, we'll work with Dr. Schmiesing to keep him informed and work on getting this refined and getting you a plan to review in January to then make a formal decision.
Very good. So we have our meeting January 16th? Is that for, how about the?
11th.
January 11th? January 11th. So that would be the time, would that be a time that we would know some of those numbers that we could have another discussion or would that be too soon?
We'll have to see, that might be pretty aggressive.
Just because of the holidays, it's going to be tough.
Honestly, our biggest hurdle is Lincoln, OCC, find time for us. We'll do our best to make that happen.
We have to do a special meeting after that, we could, but.
Yeah, we'll just do a special meeting after we do. I think that'd be, give them time to get accurate numbers and then we'll proceed from there.
Any final questions, any board members or?
No.
Mr. Hayes, Mr. King, anyone?
Thank you, appreciate that. Is there any way you could send a PDF of this to the board that we could then make public for the public?
Yeah, sure can.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all, we appreciate it.
Thank you.